All rise. The Honorable Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, the Supreme Court of North Carolina is now sitting for the dispatch of business. God save the state and this honorable court.
Good morning. The Supreme Court is very excited to be holding oral arguments here today as a part of the commemoration of our 200th anniversary. Yesterday, we were in Guilford County, and tomorrow, I'm sorry, Friday, we will be in Johnston County. But everybody here has been absolutely wonderful and welcoming, and it takes a whole lot to host the Supreme Court and to accommodate us. And so we're just so very grateful for all the ways that you've greeted us and been very kind and gracious to us, and so we're very, very glad to be here in historic Hillsborough today. We are, as another part of our celebration, we have a documentary which is airing on UNCTV. It continues to air, and so if you'll check your local listings, you'll have an opportunity to see that, we hope. There's also an exhibit at the North Carolina Museum of History, which commemorates the court's anniversary, and so it will run at least through May of next year, so we hope you have an opportunity to see that. I'm Sherri Beasley, the Chief Justice, and to my right is Senior Associate Justice Paul Newby. To my left is Justice Robin Hudson. To Justice Newby's right is Justice Samuel J. Irvin IV, and I want y'all to know that yesterday was his birthday. To Justice Hudson's left is Justice Michael Morgan. Justice Irvin's right is Justice Anita Earls, and Justice Irvin's left is Justice Mark Davis. We are truly delighted to be here, and this court will call New Hanover County Board of Education versus Stein. We're also very thankful to the lawyers who are traveling to be here and to be a part of this historic oral argument today. I understand that Mr. Doggett will argue from the Attorney General's office, although we realize that Ms. Azbil will be available to answer any questions.
Yes, or Ms. Hildebrand.
Okay, or Ms. Hildebrand. Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Dog.
May I please, the court's honors, my name is Blakely Hildebrand, and I am here along with my counsel, co-counsel, Mary McLean Azbil, and Brooks Rainey Pearson, on behalf of intervenor defendants, North Carolina Coastal Federation and Sound Rivers. At this time, I'll cede my time to Mr. Doggett on behalf of the Attorney General's office. However, we will be available for questions, should the court have any.
Fantastic. Thank you.
May I please, the court. My name is Jim Doggett, and I represent the Attorney General in this appeal. I'd like to reserve five minutes of my time for rebuttal. This appeal concerns whether the funding for a grant program that the Attorney General administered without controversy for nearly a decade and a half must end, and its funding instead be turned over to the state's Civil Penalty and Forfeiture Fund. Below, the Superior Court granted summary judgment for the Attorney General and held that the grant program did not have to end. That summary judgment, which the court repeals erroneously reversed, should be reinstated for two primary reasons. First, the unrebutted evidence before the Superior Court showed that the agreement that funds the grant program did not settle any civil penalties. Second, the plaintiff's argument that the agreement at issue here must be a settlement because the Attorney General only has the authority to enter into settlements is simply wrong. To address, to begin to address my first point, in the year 2000, the Attorney General entered into an agreement with Smithfield Foods, which, among other things, provided that Smithfield would fund an environmental grant program over the course of 25 years. At the time, Smithfield entered into that agreement—
Why Smithfield Foods in particular?
Well, at the time, Justice Newby, Smithfield had been, they're a corporate citizen and an employer in the state, but at the time, their hog lagoons had breached and flooded, creating a problem for our state. It had damaged the environment of our state, but it had also, and it also broken our state's laws as well.
So was this agreement, did it arise out of the problems you've just described?
Well, I think you have to break the agreement into two parts.
So that would be no or yes?
Well, certain parts of the agreement arose out of the fact that Smithfield had fallen out of compliance with the law, and the Attorney General proactively went to Smithfield and said, "I want to help you try to come into compliance with the law so that your hog lagoons will no longer break the laws of our state," at the same time.
So was this a, an agreement to try to address the identified problems that had arisen?
Parts of the agreement were, but that was separate from the grant program, which was unrelated from that aspect of the agreement. There are multiple parts of the agreement, so in one part of the agreement, Smithfield committed to try to come into better compliance with the law. In another part of the agreement, Smithfield agreed to fund the development of environmentally superior technologies that would try to make it less likely that its hog lagoons would break law, state law. And then separately, there was also an agreement to fund a grant program, and that grant program came about because the Attorney General at the time invited environmental groups to participate in the negotiations that led to the agreement, and they suggested that Smithfield make an immediate contribution to try to improve the environment. And what flowed out of that was the agreement to fund a grant program that's still going on today.
If Smithfield violated the agreement, what steps could the Attorney General take?
Well, I suppose the Attorney General could sue Smithfield for breach of contract, but importantly—
What was the consideration that was received to make this an enforceable contract?
Well, I think what you look at, when you look at the, at the grant program itself, it is a charitable pledge on behalf of Smithfield.
How do you enforce a charitable pledge?
Well, there are many ways to get consideration for a charitable pledge, one of which would be the, the public relations gain that Smithfield gains from having its name attached to a grant program like this.
That's not an enforcement mechanism to shame somebody in public. That may be an incentive, but that's not a legally enforceable approach.
Respectfully, Justice Newby, I don't think that's correct. I think that North Carolina courts have held before that charitable pledges are enforceable, and specifically when grant agreements provide specific details about how the grant funding should be used.
Do you have any authority for that?
I do. This is a, an unpublished opinion, but it's from the Court of Appeals. It's ECU Foundation versus First Citizens Bank, 2014 West Law, 640, 6433 201, and it also cites some earlier Supreme Court decisions that also state the same effect, that a charitable grant can be enforceable and can be an enforceable contract, and that's exactly what this is here today as well.
So if we were to look at the financial records of Smithfield, they would put all their payments here as part of their charitable grant program? It wouldn't appear anywhere else on a financial statement for them?
I'm not sure how they would, how they would be accounting for this, your honor. That's not in the record. But, but I think you have to look at the situation Smithfield was in when it entered into this agreement. It had undergone years of negative publicity where its lawyers had—
Well, but they'd also undergone years of civil penalties and various legal enforcement activities, correct?
That's correct, but the agreement is very specific about this. Section 6 of the agreement expressly states that it does not release any claims for past, present, or future violations of the law. It also states that it is not a settlement agreement, and those, and those words have binding force. If Smithfield had gone into any of these civil penalty proceedings at the time that were pending when the agreement was being negotiated and afterwards, if it had tried to settle those claims using this agreement, it would have failed.
How does our definition of a penalty in the Musa Lam case apply here in terms of the fact that this was not, in this case, the present case, deemed to be a penalty, but yet in some ways, as Justice Newby is pursuing, there's some aspect of it that seems as though it might be, in some sense, a matter of remediating a past wrong?
Well, I think, I think the definition of what a penalty is is not directly at issue here in this case. To look at what the penalty is, you have to look at the Civil Penalty Statute that DEQ had authority to issue civil penalties under. That statute is Section 143, 215, 6A, and that statute, everyone agrees, that statute is punitive by any definition of the, of the word punitive. It establishes a course of conduct on behalf of the state's citizens. It says if you break certain water quality laws, you will be held to account. DEQ has the responsibility and power to impose a civil penalty on you.
There are a couple of cases that we've decided, the Boyle's case and the Moore case, in which there were matters where DEQ had previously cited that it was going to issue civil penalties, and as a result, there were aspects of the kinds of payments that were made in the present case. Would those be distinguishable, or how would you otherwise look at the applicability of those cases to the present case?
Well, those, those cases are certainly distinguishable because they both involve settlement of claims. So what happened was that the, the regulated entities in those, in those cases both entered into agreements whereby the state released all claims for civil penalties against those entities. So those civil penalties were entirely distinguished. Here, in this agreement, the only way that the payments under the, under this agreement can fall under Article 9, Section 7 would be if this is a settlement agreement, because the agreement, if, if you actually look at the text of Article 9, Section 7, what it states is that it applies to payments that are made for breaches of penal law. The only penal laws that are at issue here is the Civil Penalty Statute that DEQ used to impose civil penalties under. So really, the analysis before this court is actually very simple. The question is, is this, is this agreement a settlement? And the answer to that question is no, based on the unrebutted evidence that was presented to the Superior Court.
Our prior cases seem to divide these types of payments into two categories, as we've talked a little bit about, punitive and remedial. This, I think one could argue that this particular agreement doesn't really fit neatly into either of those. Is there a third category?
Yeah, there, Justice Davis, there, there are many types of payments that are made to the state that are neither punitive nor remedial, and we cite a few of them in our briefs. For example, when you go into a driver's license office and you buy a driver's license, you have to pay a P, you have to pay a fee for that. If someone rents property from the state, that payment would not necessarily be punitive nor remedial as well. Gifts to the state are neither punitive or remedial. You'd say the same about taxes. Also, the tuition that people pay to the member institutions of the UNC system are not punitive or, or remedial as well. And really, this flows back to the text of Article 9, Section 7 as well. If you look at the text, it, it only deals with payments that are made for breaches of penal law. So if a payment is not made for a breach of penal law, you don't even get to the issue of whether or not the payment is punitive or remedial. Really, what the whole remedial, all, I think all the analysis in this court's cases about the difference between punitive and remedial cases, basically, it's an escape hatch, that if you, if you have a payment that's been imposed for a, for a breach of law, if it is remedial in some nature, it doesn't flow to the Civil Penalty and Forfeiture Fund. Instead, it can just go to, to remediate whatever harm is caused by a breach of law.
And going back to one of Justice Newby's earlier questions, just so we're all clear, is it the Attorney General's position that this, that there was or was not legally binding consideration for this agreement on the part of the Attorney General?
There is, there was legally binding consideration. This is, this is a valid agreement.
In one of your briefs, I'm sorry, in one of your briefs, you floated the idea that it might be perceived, might be construed as a gift, but your position today is that it was a, a contract with legally binding consideration on both sides?
Well, like I, like I suggested, Justice Newby, a gift can be binding. If you, if you make a gift and you place certain conditions on the gift, that can be, and then the person who receives the gift agrees to abide by those conditions, that gift is then a legally binding contract. And if you look specifically at the provision of the agreement that provides for the creation of the grant program, you'll see that the, the funds that Smithfield provides have to be used for environmental purposes, so that's a limitation on the Attorney General, and that serves as consideration.
But are you asking us to construe it as a gift?
Well, I think it's both a gift and it's also an agreement. It's, it's an agreement to provide a gift, and that, and, and that agreement is enforceable.
So again, just to make sure I'm understanding you, your contention is that the grant provision of the agreement is enforceable because it is, falls into the category of a gift that is exempt from the usual rule that a gift is not a consideration for a contract?
Well, I, I just don't think that's the usual rule. I think a gift can provide binding.
Well, but you keep saying they can, which suggests to me that there are circumstances when they can't.
Right. I think that if you made just a totally unconditional gift and said, "If I gave—"—
Well, of course, a lot of gifts are unintentional. I mean, they may be unintentional, but they're also unconditional.
Right. Well, I think, I think if I gave, gave, gave a present to a family member and I said, "Here, this is yours. Do with it what you will," there would not be any binding consideration there. However, in a situation like this, where you have a formal agreement that's, where the Attorney General specifically said in accepting this agreement that I will use it in a certain way and will devote it to environmental purposes, that would then be binding consideration. And it's important to look at the big picture and see why that's the case. Smithfield, and if you look at Alan Hirsch's affidavit, you'll specifically see how this came about. Smithfield specifically asked that the payments that it provide for the grant program be spread out over 25 years so that it could be recognized each and every year when the Attorney General awards grants. So again, you can see that's valuable consideration.
Are you analogizing, at one point, you appear to be saying this is a gift, and other, that argument almost tends to suggest, and these are my words and not yours, that Smithfield was essentially engaged in a, in something approximating an advertising campaign.
Well, I think, I think Smithfield had a genuine commitment to want to improve the environment of the state, but also wanted recognition for that, and I think that's, that's reasonable.
Let me follow up about the, the agreement itself and the language that would, that we would look to to see whether this is a, an agreement to provide a gift. I'm looking at the part that's called summary of commitments by the companies.
Yes.
Is that the provision, the paragraph to which you're referring, where there's sub-paragraphs in which the company commits $15 million to do certain things and then commits another $50 million to environmental enhancement?
I believe it would be Section 3 of the agreement, but it's, it's kind of a lengthy section. Let me see which specific.
Section 3, Roman numeral 3, the one that's entitled substantive provisions?
Correct.
Or something different? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the correct provisions.
Right, so I believe the provision of the agreement that creates the grant program is Section 3D. Correct.
Okay. And it's that language in there where the companies agree to pay each year for 25 years, et cetera, et cetera, that is the legally binding language to which you're referring earlier?
Yes, I think if you look down, you'll see, on the middle of page 153 of the record, that it says that the funds will be used to enhance the environment of the state, including eastern North Carolina, to obtain environmental easements, construct and maintain wetlands, and other such environmental purposes as the Attorney General deems appropriate. So again, you see that there's a caving of the Attorney General's authority there, that it's not simply an unconditional gift. It's a gift that's being made, provided that the Attorney General put those funds to a specific use.
And let me back up a minute for, to talk about whether this is a settlement or not. You indicated that there's language in here that says it's not.
Correct.
Is that determinative?
Yes, I think it is. I, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, because it is, it's absolutely correct that the, that under this court's, under, under this court's previous case law, it should disregard labels. So for example, if there were a provision in this contract that said that the payments under the contract were not a civil penalty, a fine, or forfeiture, those, that, that label should be disregarded. But the language in this agreement that says that it is not a settlement is not a label. It's a binding commitment. It's part of the substance of what the contract is, and that's how contracts work. They, the words in contracts have meanings, and so, like I think I mentioned earlier, for example, if, if Smithfield had gone into any of the pending civil penalty proceedings that existed when this agreement had been entered into and tried to dismiss those, and win summary judgment on the basis of that disagreement, that would have been unsuccessful.
With that posture, what's your response to the plaintiff's position as they have looked at in the Boyle's case that says that labels don't really matter, that the courts have to look at what is behind these kinds of agreements in order to determine whether or not it is, in fact, a settlement or a penalty, or something in remediation or something else?
Well, I think that's, I think that's, that's exactly right. Certainly, the court does have to look past labels. So if there were a label in this agreement that said it's not a civil penalty, that label would be disregarded. But you can't disregard the fact that this is clearly not a settlement. Those words have binding meaning, and, and just to, just to think about a little bit, about how complicated this situation is.
Let me follow up with that a second.
Oh, sure.
You, you, you know, the case law clearly says labels aren't binding. Your colleagues, I think, have argued that this is just another label. What makes this label different than other labels?
Well, I think the difference is that this label is a, is, is, it's really not a label. It's a word that has binding meaning, and so, like I said, if Smithfield tried to use this to actually settle claims, it would be unsuccessful, because the words in contracts actually have meaning. And also, you could really think about just how, if, if this court were to, were to declare that this agreement is somehow a settlement, it would have really disruptive consequences for both the Attorney General and also for, also for DEQ, because what claims does this agreement settle, if it settles something? I mean, this might be handing a weapon to Smithfield if, if problems continue to persist with its hog lagoons, and this court were to rule that this agreement is a settlement. Would the, would the state lose the ability to enforce its environmental laws against Smithfield?
I mean, if, if this court were to hold that we had a penalty here, would Smithfield have a right to withdraw from the contract?
I, well, I, I'm not sure I, I would agree with the, with the premise of the argument that there's any sort of penalty here.
I understand, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, I'm just trying to understand what the effect of a decision in favor of your colleague might be.
I, I'm not sure if, if, if Smithfield would be able to withdraw from the agreement at all, because presumably—if—
Would Smithfield be required, having, having agreed to make payments to provide for environmental enhancements, could they continue to be made, make such payments in the event that those payments were not used for environmental enhancements but were used for some other purpose?
I don't think so. I think the, I think if this agreement were held to be a civil penalty, it's not clear that Smithfield would, would still be obligated to continue to pay, pay money under the agreement.
So the end result, at least, of that thought would be to suggest that, in essence, there would be no benefit to environmental groups for environmental enhancements, school systems, or anybody else associated with the state?
I think that's right. I think that's right.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and raise this, since nobody else has so far. Your colleague yesterday filed a memorandum of additional authority that provided us with a copy of a session law that the governor signed yesterday that has a provision, I think it's Section 5.7, some subsection, that I can't remember. What is the Attorney General's position as to what effect, if any, that provision has on this litigation?
Well, that, well, that agreement was only signed yesterday. It's, it's, we haven't done a complete assessment.
The effective date provision says it applies to any gift made on or after July 1, 2019.
Right. I, I think the only way that the, that this could affect the resolution of this case would be whether or not it could somehow moot this case, and, and the majority of the funds that are currently held in the account that funds this, this grant program were received before that date. So if there are any question of mootness or anything like that, I don't think that, I think this court still should resolve this appeal, and that would be the, only, that's the only way I think it would really affect the outcome of this.
Do you have a position as to whether the, I think we're both talking, I think you know what provision I'm talking about, I'm sorry, I can't cite it more specifically. Do you have a position as to what the effect of that provision would be on this program going forward?
I think, I think it looks like it's a complicated provision, and I wouldn't want to take a position on behalf of the Attorney General's Office, specifically how it would be enforced, but if you, but I guess I would say that if you do look at the provision, it specifically says that the provisions of gifts are binding on the state. So that would suggest, if anything, that the commitment of the Attorney General to use this fund, this funding for environmental purposes would, would, would carry through and follow through.
Let me ask you about, kind of not exactly related to that, the plaintiff's attorneys have attached and commented on some press releases that refer to this as a settlement.
Right.
What, if anything, do you make of that as evidence of the, whether this is a settlement or not?
I don't think it's really sufficiently probative evidence to defeat summary judgment. Judge Ridgeway looked at this when he first granted summary judgment for the Attorney General, and I think his analysis was correct, that really, this is just, you, you know, a couple, a, two or three press releases that characterize an agreement as a settlement that was made by a press official who's probably not a lawyer cannot change the binding enforcement agreement itself. And here, the agreement expressly says that it is not a settlement, there's a no-release clause, and then, at summary judgment, we also presented additional evidence as well. We showed, we submitted affidavits from officials who worked at DOJ and DEQ at the time the agreement was entered into, who said that it had no effect on any enforcement of civil penalties against Smithfield. We also submitted records of enforcement, which showed that after the agreement was entered into, DEQ continued to issue notices of violation against Smithfield, it continued to assess penalties against Smithfield, and it continued to resolve any penalties that it assessed on a one-off basis.
Well, now, was there an issue actually argued in the Court of Appeals about whether there was an issue of fact or not?
That was not something that the parties raised. That was something that the court found disputed issues of material fact on its own. I think the parties here today still agree that there are no disputed fact issues this court should resolve definitively today, or whenever you release your decision, whether or not these, the payments under the agreement are penalties or not.
Just to follow up on that point, can there ever be a question of fact on this issue about whether or not a payment like this is a penalty or not?
I don't, I don't really, really think so. I think, I think it's really kind of a mixed question, because you're applying a rule to an issue of fact, but the issues of fact are almost always undisputed. So for example, normally, you would be looking, again, again, the question of whether or not these payments are penalties are not really directly before the court, because the issue is whether or not there's a settlement, but the normal course, you would be looking at something like a statute and saying, as a matter of statutory interpretation, how, how do we read the statute? Obviously, the statute can't be disputed what it says, and then you apply the rule of law to that statute and determine if the payments—
Well, but you've submitted affidavits going to the subjective intent of the parties. You know, what if hypothetically there had been counter-affidavits suggesting a different intent? Could that raise a factual dispute?
Well, I think those affidavits were submitted to the issue of whether or not there was a settlement, which is again, different than the issue of whether or not these payments are penalties at all. And really, the only issue before the court is whether, it's a, it's a, you just read the contract and see if it's a settlement or not. If it's not a settlement, then we should prevail, because the only way that these payments can be punitive in any way would be if it settled other civil penalties under the applicable statutes.
Is that, I mean, that's been your argument so far, but I want to ask you about that. In Moore, we said that the purpose of, or the purpose, when the purpose of the agreement is to deter future violations, it can be considered a penalty. Isn't it theoretically possible that something could be construed as a penalty under our prior cases without it at the same time being an actual quote-unquote settlement?
I don't, I don't, well, I don't, I don't think so. I, I think also the disagreement—
Why not?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Why not?
Well, I think this agreement, for example, cannot be in any way considered to deter non-compliance with the law. It was a voluntary settlement that was entered into, and then also, if you look at the way the agreement was structured, it's not structured to change Smithfield's obligations based on its conduct. So the agreement, for example, could have been structured so that if Smithfield has a bad environmental compliance record, its commitments to the grant program change. Either it would have to make grant program, grant contributions, or those contributions would have to increase, but that's not how it's structured. Smithfield's commitments under the grant program remain unchanged. If it has a spotless compliance record, its commitments are unchanged. It has a terrible compliance record, its, its commitments are unchanged. Every single year, Smithfield must pay $2 million to fund this grant program, provided the number of hogs it has in the state doesn't fall beneath a certain level. So there's no way this agreement could ever possibly deter Smithfield from engaging in a violation of law, because its, its obligations are unrelated to that.
As the Court of Appeals looks at it, would that be then a head tax in terms of this $1 per hog assessment, especially considering the Court of Appeals analogizes this present case to the cigarette settlement that happened some years back? Would this be a head tax?
I don't think that's, that's really the best way to characterize it. I think it was a recognition that if Smithfield were to withdraw from the state, it would not really need to continue to make these grant payments, but even, but, but— need to continue to make these grant payments. But I think the way that the payments are calculated doesn't really have any bearing on whether or not this agreement is a settlement. For example, you can't look at the way that this grant payments are calculated and say, oh, well, they're calculated in this way, so therefore, the agreement certainly must be a settlement.
So you would distinguish the present settlement situation from the situation here that the Court of Appeals looks at with this master settlement agreement with tobacco manufacturers some years back?
Well, that's a real settlement. And it says it's a settlement. It says there's a release of claims, which is precisely what we don't have here.
Can you address the plaintiff's argument that the Attorney General only has the authority to enter into settlements and why, in your view, that's wrong?
Right. Well, I think, well, first of all, the Attorney General has common law and inherent constitutional authority to serve as the chief legal officer of the state. And that authority doesn't simply go to resolving litigation claims. The Attorney General can also go out proactively, try to solve problems, which is precisely what this agreement is. And so, within the context of that authority, the Attorney General went out and worked with a citizen of our state and tried to make sure that they would come into better compliance with the law. And within the context of that agreement, at the urging of environmental groups, the Attorney General also accepted a gift on behalf of the state, which he has statutory authority to do. But really, I don't think that, that issue is not really properly before the court because the issue of whether or not the Attorney General had authority to enter into the settlement would not turn the agreement into something that isn't. It would just simply void the agreement. And the plaintiffs have disclaimed any intention or any interest of voiding the agreement.
But I think their argument is logically, this must be a settlement because the Attorney General has no authority to do anything else.
Well, I think that if the agreement could possibly be construed as a settlement, if there was some sort of ambiguity, maybe that argument would have some force. But you can't, there's no way this is a settlement. It includes a no-release clause. There is this language that expressly says that it's not a settlement. If Smithfield tried to use this agreement as a settlement in court, it would fail. So I think maybe that argument has some force, but it just doesn't go far enough here where the agreement expressly disclaims any intent to be a settlement.
Mr. Doggett, you indicated that you wish to save a little bit of time for rebuttal, and you've got a little bit of time left.
Yes, yes, I would. Thank you.
Mr. Stam.
May it please, Court. I'm Paul Stam with Dan Gibson from New Hanover County. And I'd like to acknowledge the presence and work of the Amicus Curia North Carolina School Board Association, Deborah Wagner and Lindsey Smith here. This is an outline of what I'd like to accomplish. First, begin with a thought experiment. Number two, I'll concisely summarize our position. I'd like to go over details of two documents that have not yet received sufficient scrutiny. And then I would like to also explain the applicability of the law that was passed yesterday afternoon. I'm sorry for getting the memorandum to you late yesterday afternoon, but the law was only a law mid-afternoon. But in view of the questions, I would like to answer a couple of the questions first. The plaintiffs never say that the only thing the Attorney General can do is to enter settlement agreements. Chapter 114 gives them dozens of things they can do. For example, arguing before you here today. What we are saying is that in the context, there's no authority for this type of agreement in any of those listed statements or precedents.
Generally speaking, is it your position that the authority of the Attorney General consists of, one, participating in various forms in litigation, and, secondly, in advising state agencies?
Well, there are also several statutes about participating in settlements, and there are about 11 listed in 114-2. And then they're also spread throughout the statute's other. But the reason it can't be a settlement here is it's not in any precedence, it's not in any statutes, this type of agreement. And 114-26, which is quoted in our brief, if, as was asked by several of you, what would happen if Smithfield stopped paying? The only authority that the Attorney General would have to collect would be under subsection six, to pay all monies received for debts due or penalties to the state immediately after receipt thereof to the Treasury, which would be fine. It'd go to the Treasury, and then it would be properly dispersed, not to a private bank account controlled only in an escrow account by the Attorney General. I'd like to also address the law that was passed yesterday. And again, neither of us had a chance to brief it, but I think we need to know about it and what I think would happen under this law. As Justice Irvin said, it only applies to matters, or maybe the Attorney General said, monies collected as of July 1, 2019. But that's the bulk of the money in controversy. And it makes clear that this is a cash gift or donation. And then subsection B of the new statute, all funds received by the state shall be deposited into the state treasury. And then it has, nothing shall be construed so that that doesn't apply to a state officer like the Attorney General. In other words, it's got to go to the state treasurer. Then, subsection C is the interesting part, except as provided in subsection B, the terms of the interest, the terms of an instrument evidencing a cash gift are a binding obligation of the state, except under B, it still has to go to the treasurer. But then there's another sentence, nothing in this subsection should be construed to supersede or authorize a deviation from the terms of an instrument evidencing the purpose of the gift. So if I were the Superior Court judge analyzing this after the case goes back, yeah, it goes to the treasurer, and it's going to go to the public schools of North Carolina. But to honor the purpose of the gift, it will be used for environmental enhancement. So there's a way to synthesize the new law that's now in effect with the terms of the gift. And they could call it the Smithfield Foods Memorial Grant Program, but it would not be at the discretion of the Attorney General.
Assuming that this provision of the session law that you've directed our attention to, and I'll have to say, I have not had enough time to study it to satisfy myself that I understand what it means, so I'll take any elucidation I can get.
Right.
Would Smithfield have the right to stop making payments as a result of this enactment of the statute?
I don't think so, Your Honor, because the-
I mean, they've entered into an agreement that contemplates a mechanism in which they have at least some right of input, presumably, even if this legislation applies and some kind of environmental enhancement program operated by somebody, I don't think the statute specifies who it would be. I mean, their position has been changed to some extent, hasn't it?
They have had the right previously to comment on environmental grants.
And they had a right to do it. And the Attorney General, at least as I read the agreement, was required to at least give serious consideration to their comments. Obviously, the Attorney General was not required to comply with them.
Right. And it's clear in the agreement and the escrow agreement that under no circumstances does the money go back to Smithfield. All they have is a right to comment, and they would have, under this new law, they could comment all they wanted to-
Just like I could or you could?
Sure, sure, sure. But they have, it's a very-
I have enough to say grace over that I'm not going to try, but-
It's a strange provision. The state's position is that this account is owned by Smithfield, but only the Attorney General can access it. So that's a strange type of ownership. If I may suggest-
Given the effective date, you said monies received after 2019?
That's what it says, yes.
So even if we were to accept your argument as to the substantive effect of the agreement going forward, would the signing of this into law still moot the entire lawsuit?
No, Your Honor, it would not moot for-
For payments received earlier.
The statute limitations is three years back, so it would not moot the case, but it would be a great step forward for the future.
Okay.
If I may suggest a thought experiment, and I'm completely interruptible, as you know, but I would like you to think about this. Two years ago, Judge Ridgeway, before asking the Attorney General what the Attorney General's authority to do this agreement, by settlement or otherwise, and parenthetical, to this day, the only authority that the Attorney General's come up with in the reply brief is this provision of chapter 138A, which is an exception that applies to all public servants to the gift ban. It doesn't say the Attorney General can accept gifts. It's all public servants. If they get a gift, what do they do with it? And if a legislator, the Attorney General, gets a foreign delegation that wants to give them a beautiful book about Belarus, they don't keep it for their public library, for their personal library. They give it to the state library or maybe the Wilson Library. But if they get 1,000 of them, and they don't get to give them to 1,000 of their favorite friends at their sole discretion because they're saying it's a benefit to the state. But that's the only authority the Attorney General has ever come up with for accepting this. Now, here's the thought experiment. Judge Ridgeway said, let me ask you. I came back to Mr. Stam's hypothetical of the insurance commissioner setting up a fund funded by insurance companies, having the discretion of the dispersment over those funds. Under what authority does the Attorney General have to establish a fund such as this by settlement or otherwise? And I ask you to think about this. Against the back, and remember, this was asked two years ago, not last month or six months ago. Against the backdrop of serious violations of insurance law, could the commissioner of insurance create a fund to which regulated companies in known violation of the law could contribute with those funds being dispersed at the sole discretion of the commissioner? They would be voluntary, and they would be designed to improve the public image of those companies. I would ask you to think whether that's the type of form of government that our constitutional framework has in mind.
Didn't you introduce a distinguishing feature, though, through that thought experiment, that is a known violation of the law in that this agreement here does not contemplate, at least expressly, that there has been a known violation of the law as opposed to your hypothetical wherein it seems like there was?
Well, in the Smithfield case, there were massive known violations of the law.
Proven?
Well, yes, because many of them were pursued before and after. Attorney General talks about how many of them were completed after the agreement was done and paid or done in the regular course of business. Yes, it was horrible. I mean, what was happening to the environment of North Carolina.
And when I say proven, I mean, as I try to appreciate what the hypothetical is that you've offered us by way of understanding the position here of the plaintiff. If this was not styled in the present case as being a settlement, then how do we look at it as being a matter of punishment in light, again, of the case law that we've talked about previously, namely Boyle's and Moore, in looking at the fact that the word "settlement" is not used, it's "agreement" that's used?
Right.
And yet, there was nothing pending to settle a matter. There was nothing that was done to forego a future matter. As a matter of fact, the Attorney General says there was nothing to forestall the prospect of any further action being taken against Smithfield Foods and its companies.
Your Honor, and I recall your question about the Muslim case, in which they say it's either punitive or remedial, measurable ways to fix somebody's problem, or punitive. And as the Attorney General says, there are other ways the state gets money: taxation, real charitable contributions, regulatory fees. But in this context, what we're talking about now, it's punitive or remedial. And this clearly is not remedial. There's nothing in the agreement that says it has to be remedial. And it's clearly, we believe, obvious to deter future noncompliance.
It can be punitive, under your argument, without it being a settlement.
Yes.
And you agree that there are no claims actually settled in this agreement?
I agree that the concrete, specific notice of violations that were in existence at the time were not settled. But if you look very closely, and I could take you through page by page of the Smithfield agreement itself and the letter from Smithfield immediately thereafter, time after time, they talk about deficient conditions on the farms and deficient operating practices. They eventually focus in on 55 farms that will be audited every two years. And this is what's, a notice of deficiency is like a warning ticket. It's a minor thing. But it's not that there are no violations out there that were concluded by the regular enforcement. There were unlimited matters of notices of deficiency that the Attorney General agreed as part of his commitment to ensure that the companies would not become in violation of the law. And he agreed, in his fifth, I think, commitment number five, that he would do nothing to violate his other commitments.
But the agreement itself specifically says that nothing here limits the state or private enforcement against the companies for past, present, or future violations.
It says that, but it also says in several places that the Attorney General will ensure, with an E-N-S-U-R-E, not I-N-S-U-R-E, that Smithfield does not violate. Well, the way they do it-
What's wrong with having an agreement whereby the companies who have had a past history of bad violations is encouraged to be in compliance while reserving the right to bring down the hammer should they still violate the law and regulations?
Nothing wrong with that. But the mechanism is this. Smithfield essentially turns over its, all its records, even its employees agree to be witnesses against it. And there are 55 farms with deficient site conditions or deficient operating practices. The Attorney General is going to work with them, and Smithfield says, oh, this is a great way so that we can make sure that it does not become an enforcement action. In other words, it would be, I could give examples, but it would be like a child and a parent. You know, we're going to, we know you're going to do things wrong. You've done them. Those are violations of the law. We know about the violations of the law. One of the, one of the notice of deficiency, I guess, is exhibit 25 in your document book. And it says, for example, I guess this is a good example, you're required to have 1.7 feet of free board in your lagoons. You've got nine inches. Fix it. Tell us how you fixed it. Well, that was a violation of the law, but they're going to get a chance to fix it. And the Attorney General says, I'm going to make sure that you don't ever violate. And, you know, whether the hog industry ever violated the law after that, you know, that's a question for a different thing.
Is your contention, then, in essence, that what was procured by Smithfield as the result of entering into this agreement was regulatory forbearance, I guess that's the technical term for it, or at least my technical term for it is a form of regulator, from the maximum consequences for future violations?
Yes.
But doesn't the agreement specifically provide otherwise?
The agreement is contradictory to itself.
Where does it say that they're going to, that this is in release or in agreement to not, you know, go forward with regulatory penalties or fines for actual violations?
Well, the parts where the Attorney General says, I will do nothing to violate this agreement and my commitments, and I commit to make sure that you never violate. So that's our position, is what you get is real regulatory forbearance, relief. If you behave, and if you keep paying the $50 million, and if you behave better and come up with a better, which they never did, a better technology, you get away with all the warning tickets that anybody else would-
So are you saying that the part at the end that says, nothing in this agreement should be construed to limit the state or private enforcement against the companies for past, present, or future violations, including but not limited to state or federal regulations, rules, statutes, or other enforcement rights, doesn't mean what it says?
It means what they, excuse me, it says what the drafters said it says. The dra- The draft, this was drafted in the middle of the School Board versus Moore case and they were aware, this is in their affidavits, they were aware of what was coming down in that case, so they knew the right words to use, but as this court has said many times, labels are not determinative.
Well, what, other than what you have provided for us so far and in your brief, and I'm not asking you for a walkthrough of 3,000 pages of documents, but what evidence is there in this record that the, in essence, in return for the making of these payments, the Department of Environmental Quality, as we now call it, which was not even a party to the agreement formally, has in fact, quote, "gone easy," close quote, on Smithfield?
Well, this is the invitation that the Court of Appeals gave to try to create genuine issues of material fact about what happened later.
Right, and I understand that both of, one thing y'all do agree on was that that was wrong.
Right, we don't think it's our burden to say what would, what happened later. We do show the—
Well, I do think, though, if I'm understanding your argument correctly, and ultimately, my question is, am I understanding your argument correctly? Ultimately, it seems to me your argument is that we ought, that this should be treated as a penalty because in essence, it is a payment for penalty, for violations that Smithfield committed that did not result in enforcement actions.
That's pretty much right.
So, well, that's good for me.
But not only ones that had already been committed, I mean—
I thought you were talking about future, anyway.
Both. In other words, there were 45 types of things pending, maybe 17, I don't know, something like that, I'd have to get that—
Some number more than 10.
But, a lot more than 10, but that doesn't mean they're, all they were, all that were there. There were massive violations all over the state for years, which they tried to stop in several cases by injunctive suits and it just didn't work.
Well, and if you could give me your best argument for why a simpleton like me should interpret the agreement the way you have expressed it in our colloquy here?
Read every, read every provision in it and read the letter from Smithfield Foods right after there, right after the agreement, explaining how delighted they were to be able to avoid enforcement as they fixed deficient operations and deficient site conditions.
May I?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Had there already been civil penalties that had been issued against Smithfield Foods as you talk about these past notices of violations, as had been done by DEQ in the Boyle's and Moore cases that were preludes to those matters that were termed to be settled through settlement agreements?
Justice Morgan, this is a way, a situation which our case is different than Boyle's and Craven in that there was not a single penalty that was compromised or settled in lieu of what they did.
Because I'm attempting to try to understand the similarity between the notices of violation on one hand and what you say ended up being settlements of violations of the law on the other hand. Are you saying that notices of violations are akin to determinations of civil penalties such as in Boyle's and, well, you called it Craven, it's, you know, Craven County.
Craven County.
I'm calling it Moore. How would they be similar or different in terms of your presentation?
Well, there are assessment of penalties, recommended assessments, notice of violations, and then the lowest form is a notice of deficiency. So they're all different, it's sort of in a tier, a tier system, but they're all asserted violations of the law. Some of them go ahead to become real penalties that you pay, some of them don't.
Are you saying that we should follow Boyle's and Moore then along the continuum of whatever these violations had been that were cited against Smithfield Foods and look at Boyle's and Moore as being dispositive?
Well, Boyle's and Moore are not dispositive because they're not the same situation. Just because in Boyle's and Moore you had A, B, C equals penalty doesn't mean if you have another case, A, B, and D, that it's also not a penalty. It would not follow. It may help if I took just one minute to concisely summarize our position. It's one long paragraph, but it's one paragraph. Because this case is unlike others, but it takes from many of the principles of Cobble, Boyle's, Moore, Shore, V. Edmiston. This is not a settlement because the Attorney General has identified no authority for him to execute and no power to enforce it other than an exception to the gift ban. He called it a settlement agreement at the announcement, the first announcement of grant funds and deciding functionally what the $50 million is for. Labels, collection methods, exculpatory recitals are disregarded in your previous cases. The question is whether the payments are used for measurable remedial measures or to deter future noncompliance with the law. Claims that a payment is voluntary may be euphemistic at best and the fact that payments go to a third party does not change the nature of the payments. Question is, would those payments, $50 million, have been made if not for the actual violations committed? As a consequence, the remaining funds should go to the public schools, not to grantees selected by the Attorney General in his sole discretion. If Smithfield defaults, the remedy for the courts would be under subsection six, as I said, where he could collect it as a debt, but then it would go to the Treasury from which it would hence go to the Civil Penalty and Forfeiture Fund where it should go, to the public schools.
I'm trying to understand your argument that this agreement is designed to deter future violations and therefore it's a penalty. As I understand it, typically a penalty defers, deters future violations because the violator doesn't want to have to pay another penalty. But under the terms of this agreement, future violations, whether they happen or don't happen, doesn't change what Smithfield is paying. And in fact, I understand the record that there were future violations found for which future penalties, for which penalties were assessed. So how does this agreement deter future violations?
And Justice Earl, that, of course, was in the immediate era right after 2000 is what I think you're referring to, that there were some other things assessed at that time. It was Smithfield, as they say, that chose to stretch this out over 25 years. Whether that was a cash flow issue, which I doubt, or whether it was because Smithfield wanted extra publicity, good publicity for 25 years, I sort of doubt that too, but it was Smithfield's desire to stretch it out over 25 years.
What about the fact that Deener was not a signatory, Deener, as it was called then, is not a signatory on this document? Isn't it, the AG's office does not control Deener, correct?
Well, the AG does not control Deener, but the AG goes to court for Deener all the time and I believe part of the Attorney General's office represents the Environmental Management Commission, which is the one that can do remittances.
But legally, they're legally distinct, right?
They're distinct legally, yes.
And isn't Deener the one, at the time, Deener charged with enforcing environmental laws?
That's correct. And this, and this goes to the Attorney General's citation of the TICE case, TICE feeds the Department of Transportation as its authority for, you know, lots of things the Attorney General can do. And the Supreme Court, this court in TICE made just the point that you made and that is, the Attorney General cannot settle a case for DOT without the Secretary of DOT approving it. So it's binding on—
Let me back up to Justice Earl's question.
Yes.
The question was how, if the payments are going to be made regardless of what happens, how does it deter future violations? And your response was that Smithfield chose to spread it out over 25 years. What difference does it make whether it's paid all at once or over a period of time in terms of deterrence if you have to make the payment regardless?
Yes, Justice, I don't believe that Smithfield could back out of the agreement, but one of the positions of the Attorney General was that, taken today, I believe, if I remember his answer, was that if it was, it depended on your ruling in this case, that Smithfield could back out of it and not pay. Now, that's not our position, but maybe that's why, Smithfield said, a third possibility is let's spread this out over 25 years because there's no real consideration for these gifts and if the Attorney General does not ensure that we are in compliance 100% of the time, maybe we can save a little money. I'm speculating.
Okay, thank you.
To go back to the answer that you gave to Justice Davis, if TICE holds that you can't settle a DOT proceeding without the consent of the Secretary of the Department of Transportation, does the Attorney General have the right to settle an environmental proceeding without the consent of the Secretary of Department of Environmental Quality?
Well, our contention is the Attorney General had no right to sign this agreement in any case, with or without.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but assuming, assuming that we've got, in your argument, your principal argument is, this is essentially a substitute for a penalty. I want to go back over our prior discussion.
Right.
But in the event that we've got in essence a substitute for a penalty, would this, in order for it to be a valid substitute for a penalty, would the Secretary of the Department of Environmental Quality have to sign off on it?
Well, I believe that is true. Yes, and that's another reason why—
And they're not a party to the agreement, they obviously knew about it, but they're not a party to it.
They helped negotiate it, but are not party to it.
Okay.
That's another reason. Since I have 30—
On that same logic, would Deener be bound by this agreement going forward?
I hadn't thought about that, but I think the answer is no. I think I can get one thing in in 15 seconds. The newspaper article added to the state's reply brief, State v. Williams, terrible precedent, I hope you'll disavow it, putting facts in the record by tweet and newspaper is a dangerous precedent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stam. Mr. Doggett?
I only have a minute, so I'll make, try to make this very quick. If you listen closely to what my colleague said, I think he effectively said that he conceded that this is not a settlement. Instead, he argued that somehow this agreement falls under Article 9, Section 7 because the Attorney General agreed to work with, with, with Smithfield to bring it into better compliance with the law. That's simply not a settlement. And actually, again, with the evidence that we submitted summary judgment, we showed that after the agreement was entered into, D E N R, today DEQ, continued to issue assessments of civil penalties, notices of violation, and then to resolve this on a one-off basis. So the notion that the settlement or that the agreement is somehow a settlement is simply, is totally contradicted by the record and as a result, we would ask you that you please reinstate the summary judgment that was granted by the Superior Court and reverse the Court of Appeals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doggett. Thank you to all counsel. Thank you so much for being here today. We know there are also students here as well and we're delighted to see you all here. Madam Court, would you recess us for 30 minutes? All rise! Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, the Supreme Court of North Carolina will be in recess for 30 minutes. God save the state and this honorable court.